Madam Clerk, we ready to go? Yes? Okay. North Smithfield Town Council, September 19th, 2022. Madam Clerk, will you lead us in the prayer and the pledge, please?
Lord, assist with thy holy spirit and counsel all those who are serving in positions of authority and responsibility.
By the name of the United States of America and through the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, without any particular justice.
Roll call.
Ms. Al.
Here.
Mr. Carver.
Here.
Mr. Biergau.
Here. Open forum pursuant to run on general law, 42-46-6. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to be heard during open forum? Mr. Clifford?
Yep, Mike Clifford, 489 Black Plain Road. And I've been speaking during Good and Welfare for several months now about the property that the solar farm is located on, on Iron Mine Hill Road, and I've been questioning how it's being taxed and how so much of it still remains in the Farm, Forest and Open Space Program. So I've met with the tax assessor. I really don't understand where she's getting her numbers from, and maybe it's just that I can't understand if she's speaking Greek or something, but I don't follow her thought. And so let's start with the first page on this handout. This is a certificate that came in from DEM, because you remember, Mr. Biergau, that you said DEM has to take an action, and they did. In 2019, according to the date stamp on this, DEM recertified the land, reducing it from 315 acres to 175 acres, just about half, okay? No longer qualified for the farm forest in those five lots that are designated at the bottom of the page. So they had taken an action, and I don't understand how the adjustment was ever made, and I still question whether it was made. So the next page is plat number 16, lot 106. It's 126 acres. This is a Google satellite view of the land. That blue area is the block in particular. Of that land, I mean, when you look at it closely, you can see where the solar arrays have been put in and where they are still going to be put in. And I clearly, you know, I don't see that as a couple of acres. I see that as about half the property. So if we turn the next page, we come to the field card for that property. And this was given to me by the tax assessor, which I still don't understand. So it was assessed at $2 million, okay? But if you go down to the second block on the right from the top, first block is previous owner, second block is previous assessments, you can see the building increased in this reeval. It went up to 112 from 21,000, but the land, 126 acres, always previously, it had been assessed at about, appraised at 150 to 100, I mean, 1,600,000 roughly, okay? The agriculture credit is, I believe, the offset from the farm forest open space property. So the appraised value, even though it came in at 2,570,000, it's assessed at only 880,397. If you look at the bottom of that page, it shows the land acreage and how she's classified it. I don't get it, because if you look at the sheer, if you just look at the picture of the aerial photo of the view, it's about half the lot. So if she's designated half the lot as farm forest and open space, where does it show here? Because there's nothing that measures 65 acres. It's measuring 65,000 square feet, 11 acres, and then 113 for the three different classifications. But if it was, if it did, if it was half now, only in the, if only half the property was in that forestry program, why did the credit not jump down by half? Why are we still getting 1,144, 1,144, 1,177, when half the land is no longer eligible according to the DEM certification? So I question why this is, why these numbers are what they are, and I don't, I just don't understand how it can be.
What did she say, what did she tell you?
I didn't understand her answer, really. Basically, I got out of it, she just came in the room, so maybe she can explain it to us now. But what I got out of it was that she said she was 99% certain she'd done it correctly. And I said, what did you do it off of? And she said, the field cards. And I said, have you seen the aerial views, you know, and I showed her these, and she said, yeah, I can see where you would think that, but I did it right. And I don't, I mean, how can you, you know, if only 175 acres of the five lots are supposed to be in the forestry program, I don't get it. I just don't get it. And if, again, why didn't the credit for being in the forestry program drop by half if half the lot is now used for solar? So then we move on to the next lot. This is 17175, 137 acres. That square in the right corner of that property, highlighted in blue, is a separate lot. That's an eight-acre lot. But clearly, you can see how much of this is taken up with the solar array, and if you turn to the field card for that, again, the credit doesn't move that much. Went down slightly, but not what it, not, you know, not to the degree. And again, I don't understand it. It's appraised at 2,130,000, it's only being assessed at 707. It did go up significantly from the last, you know, assessed value, but the appraisal on the land also went up by 300,000 from the last time. So I don't get it. Lot number 13, I don't have the field card for lot number 13 on the next page, but lot number 13 is a 35-acre parcel. You can see clearly, I'd say, you know, probably half, because also on lot 13, I believe there's a house on lot 13 or some type of other property. So, you know, how does, I don't get it. I just don't get it. If the value has, if the farm forest has discredited and removed half of the property or 100, you know, 125 acres of it, I don't understand why the assessments were so generous and why the credits that are issued as the ag credit didn't go down by half. I don't have the assessors card for the third lot, because when I had left, I didn't get it emailed to me today until after four, and I was already going to the printer, to Staples, to have these printed up, so I don't have the field card for that. But this is why I've been questioning it. So if you guys don't have a problem with it, you can understand what, you know, what happened here. And did anybody check with her to go over this, so you know how, why, how these numbers were arrived at, so you could explain it to us?
Well, this is what I'll do. I will find out exactly, and have it explained to me in the simplest of terms, so I understand it, and then I will relay it to you, what was explained to me.
Well, she's right here. Couldn't she explain?
Yep, I'm not gonna put her up.
Mr. President, if I may suggest that it's not on the agenda, and if we...
You can add it to the agenda like you did for the developer when he came in and wanted a tax treaty amended.
Listen, listen, I'm gonna talk to her, I'm gonna have it explained to me, so I understand it. I'm not gonna have her do that now, and then I will explain it to you.
I want to see the numbers. I want to see the actual numbers of how much...
You know what, I do too.
Well, you haven't been too anxious to look at it, John, because I've been here every month for about four months now, you know, pleading my case, saying, would you look at this, please, would you look at this? So I'd also question some other properties that are on there, too, because they didn't make sense to me as well. The King Solar Farm, it sold, I don't know what sold, except for the property, I guess, for 800 and some odd thousand about four years ago. It's assessed at 78,000. I mean, you know, where are these, again, I think the appraisals were terrible, but this thing has been dragging on since 2019, and the numbers don't change. So I don't think we're doing this correctly. And I did speak to somebody who is a tax assessor in another district, who shall remain anonymous, but I forwarded these to him and said, am I nuts, or do these make sense to you? And he said, no, you're not nuts. I don't understand this at all either. But he said, you know...
Well, you're not nuts for that, but anyway, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I'm not nuts for that, but anyway, yeah, yeah, you're not, never mind. I won't, I won't do what you do, John.
Okay.
Okay. Second thing is, on the boiler, I read the, by clerk base, I read that you're doing it without going out to competitive bidding, and I understand that's the process, but I always thought that they at least got three verbal, three written quotes, not going through a formal bidding process, but I thought three vendors were contracted in an emergency situation and asked to submit proposals, and you pick from a pool of three. But I don't see that happening here. Maybe it didn't, I just didn't read in great detail to see that that happened. But I, you know, if the memo came, the memo that the administrator sent to you was dated the 13th of this month, and today is what, what's today, the 19th, so six days, you couldn't have contacted two more vendors to find a, get a price on something? You know, we're supposed to be looking to get the best bargain for the town and the best job, so I wish we'd do it. That's it, I guess, except for one thing. Can you tell us where the firework money came from this year? Did you collect it again? I know in the past years you solicited.
Actually, the town actually kicked in for the fireworks, as well as private donations.
And who collected the private donations?
I did.
In the past, Holliston Sand and Gravel has donated to that, correct?
Holliston?
Yeah. It was listed in the town newsletter by Mr. Rosowski, two years in a row at least, but the last two years, we haven't seen it. But if that is the case, and you did approach that company, I'm questioning whether or not it's appropriate for you to participate in tonight's closed session, because it's the same principles for that company, I believe, or the majority manager of it.
Well, that's why we have a solicitor, so...
Okay. And of course, he won't give his opinion now.
When we go into executive session.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Does anybody else here like to be heard during open forum, sir?
My name is Mike Hennessy, and I live at 980 Winsocket Hill Road. Six weeks ago, I called the highway department to ask them to put up 25 mile an hour signs up on our street. The only signs there are is down there George Lee and the new bridge. Otherwise, there ain't no signs up there. And people are coming up the damn street at 50 to 60 miles an hour. It's ridiculous. Want to know, where the hell are the signs? Hell, I can't even get my damn road fixed in front of my house, potholes. I was talking to a girl next door to me, she has two small kids, and she thanked me very much for going here today, telling you about the 50, 60 mile an hour. And something's got to be done. There's no two ways about it. Somebody's gonna get hurt, somebody's gonna get killed, and what are you guys gonna do when that happens? Then you'll do something. You gotta do something now. This is ridiculous. That's all I have to say.
Mr. President, may... Mr. Hennessy, I didn't catch your address, Winsocket Hill Road?
980.
Thank you.
On the corner of Stone Ridge and Winsocket Hill Road.
I gather you'll look into that, Mrs. Rosowski.
That's why I'm getting the address for the, basic, and not just the, we can take a look at the...
That's a dangerous road. It's just, you grew up...
Up and downs and in and out.
Telephone poles hanging out in the middle and braces.
You and the chief could look into it, we'd appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Now, I tried to call the town last week. I didn't know the number, so I called the town administrator. I figured they would give me the number or what have you. And they put me in touch with the highway department, oh, so she thought. And the girl actually got me Pox and Recreation.
Oh, Mr. Hennessy, what's going on, the administrative assistant?
Pardon me?
The administrative assistant was out for, is out for two weeks, and that was a temporary, so she was trying to do the best...
Yeah, I know, she made a mistake.
Yeah, she's very pleasant, but she's trying to figure out where it goes.
What I was trying to say is, it's appropriate to try to get me the highway department, and they got me Pox and Recreation.
Oh, they were this close. So tomorrow, I will call, I will contact the chief, also director of public works, and we'll take a look at putting out. Now, just because the signs are up, doesn't automatically people slow down?
I understand that, but it gives the police a basics. I can go to the police now and say, there's signs up there that say 25 miles an hour. Now, we also have a sign down there at the bottom of the hill, and probably need another one. We have tractor trailers going up Winsocket Hill Road. That's, that's not right. Of course, the police aren't there to stop them and what have you. And it's getting ridiculous. It is. Can you imagine a tractor trailer up on Winsocket Hill Road around the curves and what have you up there? And since the new road has been completed, thank God, it's been worse.
You may find, once roads get improved, traffic speeds up, because it's not that the divots and the whole is slowing down.
Right, and people are going even faster.
Yep.
You know, it's just totally ridiculous. We need help up there. The citizens need to be protected, and it's your guys' job to do it.
I agree. Sure, tomorrow, I will contact the chief and ask, you know, we'll certainly take a look at putting up.
Do they have a radar system in this town?
We do, we have radar guns.
Oh, good.
It's a matter of posting police officers there, because we have limited police officers. That's the, in a perfect world, people would not complain about raising taxes to have another one or two police officers, then we could have a traffic squad that could be out there doing this day in and day out. And you will find, or you may notice, the people that are speeding are your neighbors, the people that live on the road. Those are the ones that speed the most.
Not to be facetious here, but the weekends are even worse. You got out of status who are running down to right steering font, the back way, and they don't give a damn about speed limits at all. And that's a fact.
Well, we'll take a look at it. There's no panacea for this, we have this throughout town, not just the town of North Smithfield, all municipalities. Some of the cities put up traffic cameras. Boy, does that tame the traffic down when they start getting those tickets through the mail. But we don't have the volume of traffic that the cities do. Something that the council can look, excuse me, chief of police, myself, we can look into that for the next budget, propose it, and we'll see what happens.
First thing is to put up the signs.
Yes, we will address that.
25 miles an hour.
Yep.
If there is no signs between George Lee and the new bridge, you've got a problem, because people don't know, especially out of status coming through solid street and going up, there is no sign until you get to the bridge. Thank you very much.
We'll look at it.
Sir, may I comment on this? They're having the same problem on Iron Mine Hill Road. Pound Hill Road is unbelievable with huge, huge sand trucks, and for whatever reason, even areas that are posted, even Greenville Road, it's, because of flat part, it's like raceway. It's unfortunate. I hope we can get something going on the poles, because I've gone through zero lot, and you're right, there's a lot of huge trucks, for whatever reason. I don't know if they're going back roads to avoid...
Traffic?
Well, the fines of the speed tolls that they have to do, but I've never seen such big trucks, except for Pound Hill. They've had a problem for a long time.
Yeah.
And as he said, if the roads are better, they go faster. But if we can get more, and I think the only way we're going to stop it somewhat is getting some cameras that would automatically shoot their plates. It's awful, because I usually go five miles over the limit, and they pass me on your road.
Well, when you see 52 four trailers going up and down the street...
Oh, absolutely, I agree with you.
Especially around the S-curves down there at the other end.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's ridiculous, it's dangerous.
Absolutely. So let's see what we can do, get more...
We're getting more and more kids on that street. People are moving in, younger crowds and what have you, and we need to have them protected.
My, my daughter lives on Greenville Road, and they're not far from school, but because there's no setback, they can't even walk to school, because the, it's unbelievable how fast they go, and even on curved lines that they, that show you shouldn't be passing, they pass. And there's a lot of mass plates.
Well, thank you very much for listening, anyway.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for caring.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to be heard during open forum? Okay, before I close open forum, just for the record, Hollison Sand did not donate to the fireworks this year.
Would you mind?
They didn't donate to the fireworks this past year.
Do you have a telephone number so I can call?
In the past, but not this year.
712...
I'm sorry?
That's in cooperation.
I've never even heard of them.
Or online?
It's on your agenda.
As far as a donation?
Yeah.
Donate to my fireworks? No, no, so...
It's on your agenda for tonight, you're meeting.
Yeah, but we, they've never donated to the fireworks.
How is it?
In the past.
If you have a road, you can happen all the month.
Would you like to disclose the address?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I don't know, I'll have to get you the list. I don't have the list in front of me.
Will you publish it?
We've had several donors, several, I'm not gonna, it's, anybody else would like to be heard during open forum? Okay, move on. Discussion my council vote on action on payment of bills. Anybody like to discuss any particular item in the bills? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Mr. President.
Mr. Biergau?
Make a motion that we approve. The list of invoices dated 9/20/2022, from the general fund, $667,732.59, from water and sewer, $11,658.21, for a total of $679,390.80, with the following electronic payments: to the library, $40,706, to the school department, $1,795,387, to the fire department, $291,272, for retirement fund, $5,288, to the interlocal trust, $159,486.5, to the Bank of New York, $27,821.5, into US Bank, $262,845.91, for total electronic payments of $2,582,718.89, for grand total payment of $3,262,109.69.
Thank you. That's a motion, by the way. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mr. Biergau?
Yes.
Mr. Biergau?
Yes. North Smithfield Town Council, sitting as the Board of Licensed Commissioners. Discussion my council vote on the action on mobile food establishment DBA, Oatmeal Cafe. Courtney? How do you pronounce your last name?
Dietz.
Dietz. Courtney Dietz, location at Goodwin Brothers Farm. License be effective September 19th, 2022, through December 1st, 2023. You can come up, but I think everything looks to be in order at this time.
Okay. I will note that I also got...
I, I will note that I also got asked to do on the first weekend in December at the Heritage Hall right next door for a vendor fair. So I just said same thing, I just had to kind of see how tonight went, but I just...
When she has a, when she has a permit for mobile food truck, she's good for the year.
Yeah, so you're, right, that's...
Yeah, once I have it.
You have it, you're good to go.
Okay.
Uh, what, what, what kind of food do you, uh?
Um, I do sweet and savory oatmeal bowls, um, hot, and then overnight oats.
Okay.
So I've been open since two thousand nineteen, and have permits in Barville, Providence, Pawtucket, North Sichet.
Okay, you're loco, you're from town?
I'm from Barville.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Close enough.
We're neighbors, yeah.
Mr. President, if I may.
Yeah.
On the front page, Ms. Deets filled out hours of operation seven AM to two PM. Second page, daytimes and operations of eight AM to four PM, multiple weekends at Goodwin Brothers Farms. I would just suggest that we expand it to four PM on both pages, so, so give Courtney enough time. So that'd be from seven to four, if the council would consider that. And whether she stays at Goodwin's during those hours, but it would give you the leeway to be open those hours.
Okay, and what happens if, like, Goodwin Brothers says one week, hey, we did better and we're open? I don't even know what time Goodwin Brothers is open till, to be honest, but, um, if they're open till later, would it be a problem if I'm there till six PM, or is it kind of?
And I, I don't, so if the council sees, what I was trying to do is protect Courtney.
Yeah, you don't want to lock her in.
Let's make it seven AM to six.
Same hours, it's gonna go two to six and eight.
Right, just expand the hours for her.
To be honest, I don't think we ever put hours on a food truck.
No, really?
No.
I don't think we ever have. They've notified us when they want to be open, but I don't think we've ever put hours on a food truck. Only question I had on this was, on, on the first page, the owner is, is Dave Maliko, and then it's gonna be a Goodwin Brothers. Does he own that property? Does Dave Maliko own the property where the, where the bond is on Goodwin Brothers?
So, oh, sorry, if I can just step in. When I did the online, um, application, it asked me to add an address, so I just assumed, and I tried to look up my own, because I thought they was asking about my ownership address, um, and it wouldn't let me come up, so I was like, okay, maybe they're asking for Goodwin Brothers. So that was the ad, that was what came, what allowed me to submit, um, I'm, and that was the owner that it said in your database, but not, not something I typed in directly.
You've talked to Bob Goodwin?
I talked to Josh Goodwin, his son, that I think him and his brother now own it.
But you have permission from Goodwin Brothers?
Yeah, they're the ones that contacted me.
I think we need to just clarify that on the front page, that it's not Dave Malik, Dave Maliko lives next door to Goodwin's. That's all. Whatever the address is for, for Goodwin Brothers, I think that's what we need to put, is the primary location.
All right, so why don't we, we could just put Goodwin Brothers on Greenville Road.
Yep.
So make that change.
Madam Clerk, we can correct that when you, when you issue the license, correct? Thank you.
And then we're also gonna change the, on the, on the, on the two pages, we have the hours on the front till, uh, to two o'clock, we're gonna extend that. Why don't we just, uh, take off the hours altogether?
So you have enough time to play with things?
Okay.
I, I think Ms. Deets will know when it's time to pack it up and go home.
Oh, I'm sure I'll be ready too, yeah. It's just me usually, so.
Okay.
I'll be ready, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you're right, if you're doing great and things are busy, so why, why pack up if you don't have to, if, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we're just gonna scrap the hours altogether.
Okay, sounds great, yeah.
Got that, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the food truck license, Courtney Deets, for food truck oatmeal cafe. It has all the appropriate sign-offs, just waiting for our approval.
That's a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Two seconds. Discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Ms. Carla?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Ms. Vadeney?
Yes.
Ms. Vera?
Yes.
You're all set.
All right.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, if it is respectful, I do have a babysitter tonight, so I'm gonna be leaving.
No, you can leave, yeah.
Thank you very much, happy.
All right, good luck. Discussion by council vote of the action on firearm and or ammunition sales, DBA KMD Sports LLC, Keith Delude, online sales. License be effective nine nineteen twenty-two through twelve one twenty-three.
Mr. Delude's not here, I, I can gather. He's getting the audience. I had two questions on this.
Where's the?
I had two questions on this. One was, is it only online sales that he's doing with ammunition? Because this is a residential neighborhood, and the other one was, should he even have a business license in a residential neighborhood? I know the building inspector signed off on it, but that was just a question I had, he's operating a business in a residential area. Online, he may not have anything in his house, he's just running his computer from there, and it's being shipped from other places, he's like the middleman. I just, he's not getting answer those questions, so. I mean, if he was, he was selling popcorn that way, it wouldn't be as concerned, but he's selling ammunition. A little different level of concern.
But don't we have a lot of businesses being run out of their house, construction, et cetera, plumbers, the whole nine yards?
Well, it's different to have a business office in your house, that's, that's different than running a business, an online business, and that's what I just wanted to get clarification on.
Yeah, if, if I may, Mr. President, make a suggestion. Hours of operation as needed and as desired, no set hours. As Council Vadeney said, if, if he's doing online sales, uh, internet-wise, and it's going out of a different warehouse, there's no traffic impact. But I, I'm not, I have no idea what he has in mind for sales, retail, wholesale, is he going to have traffic coming into a residential area? So it's also, uh, I, I, if, I would just maybe suggest that you continue it to Mr. Delude's here, so he can answer.
There's too many questions, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we, we'll continue this, so we'll ask him to appear at the next one, so we can, he can answer some questions.
You'll contact the Madam Clerk, ask him to be...
Okay, we're gonna move on. Discussion by, discussion by council vote of the action on consent agenda. All items in this section are considered in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council is so request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda. Does anybody have any items that they would like to be removed from the consent agenda for discussion?
Council minutes of September sixth.
September sixth? Okay, there anything else anybody would like to have removed? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, uh, minus the council minutes from September sixth, two thousand twenty-two?
Mr. President?
Ms. Al?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, consisting of communications from animal control monthly report for August two thousand twenty-two. North Smithfield Police Department monthly report for August two thousand twenty-two. North Smithfield Municipal Court monthly report for August two thousand twenty-two. And North Smithfield Fire and Rescue monthly report for August, um, two thousand twenty-two.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Ms. Carla?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Ms. Vadeney?
Yes.
Ms. Vera?
Yes. Now, Mr. Vadeney, do you want to speak on this?
Yeah, on the September sixth, on the municipal building review task force. It states that the trust, it's, it goes on, it, Mr. Northrop stated, and may the task force requested footprints for the police station be obtained, but the task force was taking a pause to move forward, which we all agreed with and all that. Trust inspected the police station and stated the building is a liability to the town. It didn't say it needed to be replaced, it said it should be replaced, um, just clarification. But then the trust reported meanwhile that the town must address specific findings of report, which they issued in their letter dated June fourteenth, I believe, from Brad Weaver. But the la, the last part of it, it said the cost of repairs is eighty thousand. Actually, what we did is, we made a motion to award a contract to Tekton as an, as an addendum to their contract, to go ahead and do, and to spec out and, and draw up plans and stuff to go out to bid, to, to address those shortfalls. And that proposal that they submitted was eighty thousand dollars.
Not the repairs themselves?
Not the repairs themselves.
Right.
And we authorized the administrator to sign that. That's actually the action that we took.
Okay. Get all that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not sure exactly who made the motion in the second. I probably made the motion, I don't know who made the second, but I, I know it was unanimous, you'd have to go back and, and watch the video.
Councilman indicated it was made by Councilman O'Hare, seconded by... Carville.
Carville.
Carville. Carville. Is that right?
Okay, could be. But I know that's, that's, that's what transpired, that meaning that we actually approved, approved the proposal and authorized the administrator to sign it.
That was it? We're good to go, Tammy? You got that? Okay. Uh, let entertain a motion to approve the minutes from September sixth, two thousand twenty-two, as amended.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Ms. Carla?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Vadeney? Yes.
Yes. Old business, uh, discussion by council vote of the action and update of the municipal building review task force. Mr. Northrop.
Good evening. I went back and looked at a past town council meeting when I reported from back there, even though I had no report, can't hear anything, so. We do have a meeting Wednesday. At what point, we expect Tekton to update us on, um, their contact with contractors and construction managers on, uh... With where construction sits now in terms of costs. And that's about it, so.
What were we talking about?
What's that?
We're gonna also deal with the proposal.
Yes, yes, that's right, and go over the proposal and start that work too. Hopefully have more information for you in a couple of weeks.
At five thirty, correct? Five thirty?
Five thirty.
Yes, at the police station.
Okay. All right, thank you. Discussion by council vote of the action and update of the Hellower Review Committee, Mr. Carville.
Uh, thank you, we had a RFQ that was posted last week by the finance department, and they're expecting, uh, responses. They're expecting responses to, um, to start coming in by October eighteenth, and that's all I have.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Carville? Thank you. New business, discussion by council vote of the action on abatements and supplementals, Mrs. St. George, Miss St. George, sorry.
Hi, um, so I have supplementals in the amount of one thousand thirty dollars and eighty-nine cents. For a prorated new construction.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the supplemental tax in the amount of one thousand thirty dollars and eighty-nine cents per the direction of the, um, tax assessor.
Thank you, uh, is there a second on that?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Ms. Carla?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara? Ms. Vadeney?
Yes.
Ms. Vera?
Yes. Okay.
Um, next I have abatements in the amount of one thousand two hundred and eighty dollars and nineteen cents.
Anybody have any questions, Miss St. George? Motion to approve?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the abatements in the amount of one thousand two hundred and eighty dollars and nineteen cents per the direction of the tax assessor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Ms. Carla?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara? Ms. Vadeney?
Yes.
Ms. Vera?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Miss St. George, can you just go back to putting the totals on the bottom, the accumulating totals that we were doing, they seem to have gone away some.
The running total for the fiscal year?
Yeah.
Okay, do you want, I have a copy.
I was just going forward, if you could just make sure that they're in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
A discussion by council vote of the action on payment of invoice number four two five six to American Beauty Sand Works for Booth Pond Conservation Area regarding regulations. Uh, I requested this be put on the agenda. The land trust, uh, as you know, maintains the Booth Pond area, and they just had a bunch of signs that they want to put up, uh, indicating that, like, no hunting, no ri, riding ATVs and things like that on, and as you know, that they maintain that whole property, we're not, we're not responsible for, uh, doing anything over there, and they do a great job with it. And I don't know if you've ever been out there, but that connects over to the Sousa property, and makes a big giant loop, and also connects into Went socket as well. So, uh, they just want to put up signs advising people what the rules are of the Booth Pond area. And those signs come in the total of one thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. I'm requesting that the town pay for that. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. President, if I may.
Yeah.
As, uh, the council's aware that, uh, the land trust and the town in North Smithfield are co-owners of this property. And they're, they're doing it, they're doing the labor to go out there and mount them, their aluminum signs, because we put up other signs and they just get ripped down. This'll be a little bit more sturdy, impervious to the weather and vandalism.
And not to mention, they maintain the trails and they do a great job up there.
Absolutely, they do, yeah.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by, uh, Ms. O'Hara? We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Ms. Carla?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara? Ms. Vadeney?
Yes.
Ms. Vera?
Yes. All right, uh, C is gonna be continued, uh, if you can put that on the following agenda, Tammy, for the third, I believe that is. A discussion by council vote of the action on emergency repair of Memorial Town Hall Building, Mr. Zulinski.
Thank you, Mr. President, I, I think we're all aware that we've had forty-degree nights, cold weather is coming. One of the biggest problems our country and this town has faced is supply chain receiving adequate, uh, reasonable time. So, uh, before us, before you, is our request to, uh, install, there's a new, excuse me, there it is. You have two quotes in front of you, just to replace the boiler only, but that does not address the old piping, corrosion, electrical components. This is a state-of-the-art boiler. And it's my recommendation, as well as Public Works Director, the Finance Director, and I believe the Council President, uh, we, we, and the emergency, uh, powers that, uh, we brought this before you. So you have before you the amount of thirty-four thousand six hundred and eleven dollars and nine cents, so that we can start the process of ordering the boiler and having it installed, it's gonna be a current, uh, turnkey operation.
With, uh, supply chain issues and everything, uh, do we have any idea how long it's gonna take to get everything in?
We, we don't, Mr. President, I know that we're, we're awaiting catalytic converters, we don't know when they're coming in. I know people that have bought vehicles that have been postponed for almost a year because of electronics and things that are involved. Have no idea on this until you actually go out to try and get it. But I, I, I think it's safe to say that we're gonna anticipate a delay, and it's going down into the forties again next week, so falls here. That's something I don't think we should be dragging our feet on. Uh, that's something I don't think we should be dragging our feet on.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Zulinski?
Just, just one, Paul, this falls with, and I know it follows emergency purchasing procedure, I know that, the source has weighed in, but, um, how does this fit into our lease that we have with them? We're responsible for...
Yes, the town will always own the building, that lease for one dollar a year with the heritage, and as we all are aware, that it's just not the Heritage Association, veterans meet there, land trust meets there.
I mean, we're responsible for a certain, certain level of, of heat and electricity in that building as well, a certain level of funding for that as well, I know that...
Yeah, that's in the budget where we give money for utilities, but this is a major, um, uh, infrastructure repair that has to be...
So we still own the building, and so it's...
We don't.
Okay. So I know we still own that, I was just making sure that sometimes you have leases where they're responsible for certain improvements or whatnot.
Yeah, we don't have that lease.
We're, we're responsible for the improvements on it.
No, we're responsible for, uh, roof, for, well, I'm not sure, depending on the extent, we could, uh, Richard and the, uh, Conservation Commission are very amenable when it's something... We had a flashing on the roof, Jimmy, and, and they went and took care of stuff of, of that nature, but this is, uh, this is not in their budget. This is an emergency.
A quick question, is there, nobody's taking showers over there or anything, is there any harm in, uh, possibility in getting, uh, a couple other companies to find out what they could do that, that same job for?
I'm gonna defer to, uh, Director of Public Works, I see he's, he's getting up, so we'll, we'll...
Okay.
Ray into that.
Good evening. Under that ordinance, this is already been audited. Once your approval and the administrator's approval came in under this ordinance, it was an audit process.
Okay.
So, uh, we didn't have any time to go into the price agreement and start bringing people in to tours and, and to go through the process of putting this out. Uh, as everybody stated right now, it's crunch time. I'm, I'm waiting eight months for a road that's collapsed to get the concrete culvert in. We, we, we just can't get anything in, everything's backdoored, backdoored. So once that approval came in from the administrator himself, it was audited.
Okay.
Uh, so now it's in Mr. Perry's hands, it's been audited, uh, and he feels confident that with any luck, we can have this in in a month, and, uh, but, just hold on right like this. Uh, he, he's, uh, he's done numerous work on the old boiler there, uh, in the past, we never get an invoice from him, he's worked on that, and the school department's more than capable of, of taking care of this, um, so when he go, went over there and shut the water supply off, there's no water supply out at this time, so we're just gonna hold on, uh, forever until it comes in.
Oh, there's no water to the building right now?
Well, we shut it off because it's just pouring through the basement.